I'll be this week. I'll be this week. Put it off. He's gonna make good sleep. And it's gonna be a beautiful day.
That's pretty good.
Huh? Yeah. Come on, man, you got to sit here, come on. You want to let them out? You're gonna put in the...
I went to, uh, check if I get my wife to leave the car. Okay. Get back in the car. Oh, I'm gonna try to move. I gotta get the phone on. So, oh, I'm gonna go right to the garage. I went to, uh, over there and get the battery from my ear. They're better than they were. Oh, yeah.
All right, we're gonna get started. Uh, happy new year to everybody. Uh, towards beginning of, uh, twenty twenty-four. Tonight's Monday, January eighth, sixteen AM. Um, we do have something on agenda, but before we get started, I just wanna, uh, remind everybody, and I know the mayor's gonna have him on the side before we start our city council meeting. But a long time, city manager Steve Raper, uh, passed away December twenty-eighth. And, uh, I know Councilman Blackwell and Mike worked with him for, for many years while he was all over here, and I believe that he, um, had a team for about sixteen years. He was here during Hurricane Floyd and, I think, what, the Imperial Center or Brazel Library and, um, Bloodless Block. He had a great impact on Rocky Mountain, not only, uh, physically, but with the people and, and the seventeen, you know, the, any, when you say anything, we're going out. Mr. Raper, your work, uh, very organized, collaborative, communicative, right, great. I know he was involved in, I, I was involved in the city at that time, but I was involved civically, he was involved as well, but, uh, I believe the services for, um, Mr. Raper are, uh, Saturday the thirteenth at Lakeside. Withering Woodley, I think, was handling all the arrangements. If anybody wants no specifics, you can add it where you're willing. So, just keep, uh, Mr. Raper and his family, uh, and friends and colleagues, and I think we still have people that are working with Mr. Raper. So, well, with that being said, uh, Mr. Manager, um, turn it over to you. I know we've got, uh, exciting, um, presentations.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Proten. So, uh, I'm going to introduce, uh, Kellyanne Williams, who will provide an initial overview and also, uh, introduce to the council developers and their proposals for the...
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Kellyanne Williams. I'm the Strategic, um, Initiatives Assistant City Manager. Uh, it's great to be New South Ventures, um, which is a development group that's active in Danville, in Fayetteville, in Wilson, North Carolina. So, please help me welcome them, and they have a presentation for you.
How's everybody doing? I'm Dwayne Washington. Um, as you can see there, apologies, my other partner, Mike Masey couldn't join us today, but I also have Andrew Pope, who's already been here, and Ben Moss here with us today. You know, we're, we're so excited to be here. I gotta be real honest with you guys. I've been developing business for quite some time. Started right around about two thousand and five in Durham, North Carolina. Um, we had a vision that, as you all may know, Durham, just like most towns, uh, tobacco had left, right? And then, and downtown was pretty dark. And my partner and I, we saw opportunity where people didn't see opportunity. And at, at one point in downtown Durham, we had about thirty buildings that we owned under the name of Great Product Development, a previous company that we owned. And so, we partnered with the city of Durham, and we were really at the forefront of what you see in downtown Durham if you were able to bid it there today. Um, and right around two thousand fourteen and fifteen, we thought, you know, let's take this show on the road. You know, Durham got to a point where, uh, to buy a property was just too expensive. It just didn't make sense. You know, so we started to look at other towns, Rocky Mountain, Wilson, as, uh, Kellyanne mentioned, uh, Danville. But these are all towns that we have been in since about two thousand and fifteen. And now we're to a point where we're able to stand in front of you all and say, hey, now it's time for the visions that you guys may have individually, we're here to make those a reality. That's really what we're about. You know, when people see that they wanna run away from something, we're gonna run toward it. And we understand that towns like this, towns like Wilson, they wanna have their, their, their piece of pride, if you will. They wanna have more bus, more seats in their downtown. You know, and that's what we're here to do. I'm gonna let Andrew take over more of the nuances of what we're really trying to accomplish here today, but I thank you guys for having us, and we're excited by the future here in Rocky Mountain.
So, good to be with you. Um, so Michael, Dwayne, and I all went to the same high school, and, and Michael and Dwayne were a little bit ahead of me. I looked up to them as they were doing the work in Durham and sort of getting things started. And, uh, you know, it's good to be here, with you here in Rocky Mountain and try to think about the future of your downtown and our potential work together. So, as Dwayne said, you know, our group is sort of working across North Carolina, a little bit in Virginia. We've got sort of a handful of communities where the active development entities, that's Rocky Mountain, Durham, Wilson, and Fayetteville. We're then sort of a development consultant and a number, number of other different communities. You've seen there kind of darker places, started some work down in the Wilmington area, a couple of projects in the greater Charlotte area, a couple of projects up in the western part of the state. I'm talking more detail with you today about Danville and Wilson, knowing you may have read a little bit about some of our work there, and we think that that's applicable to Rocky Mountain. But we know Rocky Mountain and Wilson are different places. We don't wanna say too much about Wilson, other than to say, we think that it is a community that we should sort of grow together with, and that we think Rocky Mountain and Wilson have a lot to sort of put together on the table, to sort of draw from the Raleigh sort of metro route. We love Rocky Mountain because you can both be as much as part of Raleigh as you need to be, while have your own very distinctive legacy and identity. We think that there's a market for that. We think that people are looking to live in communities that are distinctive, that don't just feel like a suburb, but that they can still go back and forth. They can maybe have one person in the household who lives in a metro area, and another person who lives and works next to their house. And then you gotta go back and forth over time. So, you go, look, a lot of the markets where we're working, and that's an active feature, right? They're actively tied to these larger sort of economies, but they have a real distinctive characteristic, a legacy, a history. In Rocky Mountain's case, we love the downtown infrastructure. You've got great bones in Rocky Mountain. You've invested in your bones with your street skate project, with your downtown sort of entertainment and sports venue. You made the investments, and so we wanna sort of help you amplify those investments and continue to draw people to live in downtown Rocky Mountain. So, Danville's one of the markets that we think is, is a really important analog to what Rocky Mountain could be. They're about the same size of Danville and Rocky Mountain. We've been working in Danville since about two thousand fifteen, as Dwayne said. There, we sort of serve as a development advisor. We've been working with a, an investor, a local foundation that's really been looking to buy a lot of the old historic buildings in downtown Danville and turn them into housing. Downtown Danville has taken on over five hundred residential units in the last ten years downtown. Those are adaptively reused buildings. A lot of them hold tobacco warehouses or textile warehouses. So, these aren't new construction projects. These are older sort of buildings that have been rehabilitated. That's what we're here to talk to you today about in Rocky Mountain, is a couple of the older stock in your, your building supply that we think can be turned into, uh, newer housing and retail opportunity. Over the last, so almost ten years, the foundation and we have sort of go, gone to purchase and stabilize about ten million dollars of those properties, and about four-fifths, almost eighty percent of that portfolio is already turned hands into redevelopment from where it originally started. We've partnered with a lot of other developers, so we don't go into a community and say, hey, we need to do it all. We look for others to partner with. We do joint ventures all the time with folks, both local and folks who are coming into the market. Sometimes we find local folks who appreciate having our experience and who appreciate the lessons that we have learned in Durham and other places. Sometimes you have out of, out of town folks who wanna get into a market, maybe that doesn't work at a lot of points well, and it would sort of help them get confidence to come into a market where they maybe not have the experience that others do. We recently sort of extended our commitment to downtown Danville. This is the River District here. Um, I don't wanna get political at all. Danville is the site of a casino, um, and I know that has two sides of a coin, and I don't wanna, again, no, no statement whatsoever. But that is a community that has dealt with the impact of gaming on their community, and we've been involved as they've helped to think through that from a housing point. We're neutral on the actual sort of economic development play, but it is something that we've been part of in conversations about housing and how that can affect the community. So, we've also been sort of in the middle, we're hoping it's gonna be a fifteen-year partnership in, in downtown Wilson. We began our work in Wilson a little bit later than Danville, about twenty seventeen, looking at older buildings to sort of do adaptive reuse projects. Uh, as we were talking, the Opportunity Zone Program, which Rocky Mountain is blessed to have a big core of your downtown census tracts, are in the Opportunity Zones. When the Opportunity Zone Program came out in twenty seventeen, it turned out that Wilson's only sort of major downtown tract was where the old BBT towers were. They are off Nash Street in downtown Wilson, and the city was talking about imploding those towers, the BBT was getting imploded those towers, and just make it surface parking. So, we got to talking to them about their, their interest in having the YMCA come downtown. We got talking to them about what kind of housing opportunities we were, and what we had thought was gonna be an initial adaptive reuse project, like what we're talking about in Rocky Mountain, became a new construction project, because we saw the ability to invest in the YMCA, to think about a, a public parking project that sort of connected to and created sort of a, a mini block, if you will, that would really fed itself. And so, that began what we call Phase One, a demonstration project, that frankly, we, we thought would be kind of a nice Phase One, and then we'd go back to doing older buildings and adaptive reuse projects. But then, sort of, negotiations with Carolina Mycats began, and, and ultimately, the stadium project that you may have read about recently, when Wilson was looking to build a downtown stadium, sort of came to be, and will sort of launch the next phase of, of development. We know that there's some Friday night football rivalry between Rocky Mountain and Wilson, so we wanna help Rocky Mountain invest in its same engines. You know, it may not be baseball, maybe it is. I know that there's been talk of sort of expanding baseball in Rocky Mountain, and we're happy to support that however we can. But if it's not, if it's sort of continued sort of investment and support of your existing entertainment system, which I fear is very well, well-programmed and active, then we wanna sort of help you do that and think about the next level of, of phasing and investment in the, the housing supply support value. So, here's just some pictures of what we're doing in Central. We're, we're proud of the project. Um, it's coming in a little behind schedule, generally on budget. We, uh, have started signing leases. We're doing it in two phases, sort of the initial phase of folks are gonna be moving into the next month, and we expect completion in April of, of this year. Interior jobs for you. We really focus on having what we call kind of urban-style housing product. We try to find sort of smaller units that are highly amenitized. So, we do a lot of studio units, a lot of one-bedroom units, some two-bedroom units, but this project in particular is really targeting folks who are kind of on the, the first part of their sort of job career, and then folks who are on the second half of their sort of work experience. Not as much a family sort of project, we don't have the amenities to support families, but we do look for a lot of sort of, you know, thirty and younger and sort of fifty-five and older folks. And we're seeing a good mix of those folks who are starting to lease this project up in Wilson. The rents are anywhere from, we got, oh, sorry. Um, the rents are around thirteen hundred to about two thousand, is sort of the range right now. Um, the studios, we have a couple of, of affordable sort of workforce housing type units. They are at different levels, from the studios and the ones, and those sort of go down as low as, I think, twelve hundred a month. Uh, but I would say that the initial studio rent is right around thirteen hundred, and you get to right around two thousand for two bedrooms. Yes, more. They, they're, right now, the agreement we have, we signed a specific sort of affordability incentive with the city, and so we're providing a hundred, sorry, fifteen percent of the units at a hundred percent of area median income, and an additional ten percent at a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. And we've done that and advised sort of other developers in that sort of model for workforce housing across the board, specifically with new construction. So, we've got a project that we've worked on in Kannapolis, North Carolina, just outside of Charlotte. And there we went for fifty percent at eighty percent of area median income. That was an aggressive sort of workforce housing project, but we found an investor who was a mission-related investor. They were really focused on subsidizing sort of workforce housing in that level of affordability, and so, um, we, we sort of pushed more into that. Um, oftentimes, we can sort of find some bank financing when we sort of get to that level as a new construction. So, twenty-five percent at eighty percent is a level that I think the market is increasingly starting to accept for workforce housing specifically. And I think for lower levels of affordability, sort of about sixty percent of AMI, I think there you start to see it, a market-based project, sort of ten to fifteen percent is the threshold to still make the deal, is what I'm pushing on. So, this is the, the sort of long-term plan. This is what, not what we started off with in twenty seventeen, when we sort of began working with Wilson, but Central Project that you sort of see there at the, uh, sort of up there, there's Nash Street, you know, downtown Wilson and all, it's sort of the Nash Street sort of corridor. Um, and then in around, you know, twenty twenty-two, when we started thinking about the master plan, we started thinking about what could sort of go around to support the real estate part investment they've made, and we were thinking about a stadium. And so, ultimately, our downtown development agreement with the city of Wilson would sort of see two hundred and twelve million dollars of private investment come along to support the public investments they're making in baseball stadium and infrastructure improvements. That's something we, we like to think creatively about with, with cities, and we hope, you know, this is our first sort of conversation with you today, but we hope that it'll be the first of many to sort of continue to think about how we can amplify your visions and where you hope to grow in the future. So, I've hit sort of the highlights, but just to kind of sum up before I, I think it to, to talk about the specifics of the project, you know, why Rocky Mountain? We've been sort of thinking about Rocky Mountain since twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. We sort of made some initial sort of partnerships to invest in these buildings that we're talking about, sort of around the nineteen, twenty time, in part because you've got great bones. I mean, it is a, a great city. It's laid out well, the streetscapes are great, you've got walkability already between assets, you know, the, I'm, I'm a fan of the railroad track. I know sometimes people have trouble sort of thinking about how you cross a railroad track, but I love it. I think when the railroad, when a train comes to town, you think about an active city. You think about people coming and going and all the commerce and activity that comes with that. So, I think it's a great asset for Rocky Mountain. Um, we appreciate that you've already reinvested in yourself. This is, you're, you're not, you're not scared to invest in, in private development and to think about the way that private development spurs the growth in the public interest. We get that, we've seen that, we wanna continue that sort of with you, and we hope to sort of go on to do bigger and better things. And then, as I said, connectivity in major metro markets and a distinctive identity. Can't emphasize that enough. There are people who don't wanna live in Raleigh. They just don't. They wanna live someplace different. They wanna have access to Raleigh when they need to have access to Raleigh, but they wanna live and work someplace different, and you have the ability to offer that alternative while still having access to that larger sort of market, if necessary. So, with that, I'll pass it to Benton, who, project managing this for us in town. I don't know, I think some of you know Benton Moss, but he's definitely been a great asset for us here in town to sort of help think through these projects and apply a lot of the expertise he gained working in other development firms, and he'll talk to you through sort of specifics of our proposal.
As Andrew mentioned, um, I'm sort of the poster child for, uh, for wanting to not live in the triangle, but have access to it. Um, these projects are also special to me, not because of just the things that Andrew talked about, but because I'm from here. My wife and I move back here, we love Rocky Mountain, so these are, these are passion projects for us. They're special to us. So, this is a map of, uh, now. Obviously, you all know, you know, you understand, you can orient yourself. Um, our first project, um, located on the Edgecombe side is two oh one South Washington. It is the old orange-crushed bottle, uh, bottling plant, for those of you who may, may remember that history. Um, so it's, it's a block south of Edgecombe Community College. Uh, it's, it's roughly a block away from the Beavislofts, it's down the street from Laramie Coffee House, as well as the Five Points Development, um, all located right there in that corridor, as I believe, uh, one councilman, uh, mentioned, uh, on the, hopefully, future, uh, Moncton Mill credit. So, we hope to see that connectivity throughout town, um, you know, taking us from downtown all the way to the mills and beyond. So, that's our first project. Um, the second project is a couple blocks west on Southwest Main. It is the two hundred block, it's, uh, sort of the majority of the two hundred block, does not encompass the, uh, two forty-eight Southwest Main, which is the old Tau Town building, but encompasses most of the, the rest of the building environment there, uh, just north of Station Square, um, just south of the, uh, look at the new, the new town development office as well. So, um, you know, you understand where that, that's located. And again, both these walkable to the event center. Um, we're gonna be offering commercial retail opportunities in these projects that we hope will be fed from the activity that we see at the, uh, at the event center. So, this is where they're located. Um, we've got the location, they're in the heart of downtown, and we think that they're gonna be connected to all the activity that will be sort of filtering down from the event center and from, from the activity that's already started within the Five Points area. So, the first project, uh, two oh one South Washington will be, um, it'll be a sixteen-unit mixed-use project, sixteen units on the second and third floor, roughly eighty-seven hundred square feet of, of commercial retail on the ground floor. Um, as Andrew alluded to, uh, earlier, it's a historic property, typically with historic properties that comes with, um, becomes a factor expenses, because they are old properties, a lot of structural integrity that you have to address upfront. Um, you are typically required, uh, in historic districts to maintain, you know, some of the elements of, uh, historicity, if you will. Um, on the commercial side, I, I don't want this to get lost, um, we have thirty-six units between these two projects, but we have roughly twenty-five thousand square feet of commercial retail. That represents quite a few businesses that we want to locate in our downtown. Um, and so, we don't want just people living, we want people living, working, playing, and staying in downtown. So, this particular project has about eighty-seven hundred square feet. For both of our projects, we'll offer, um, you know, it'll be, it'll be a negotiated ten improvement budget, uh, but we wanna incentivize businesses to come to our projects, um, and to be, you know, sign long-term leases to be in downtown Rocky Mountain. We wanna help them do that by offering some incentives in our budget. Um, it's walkable to the event center, we want it to be as high and finished as we can have, you know, within our budget. Um, but bottom line is, it's a beautiful historic building and it deserves a, a new lease on life, and I think we'd love to, to start here. So, that's our first project. Second project is, uh, two oh four, two thirty-two Southwest Main. It's, uh, it's roughly thirty-eight thousand square feet total. It's twenty units on the second floor, and about seventeen thousand square feet of commercial retail on the ground floor. Um, I'll go back to two oh one Washington. I will say about this project in particular, commercial, it's a bit more demisable. So, we, we have a little bit more flexibility on the commercial side. So, I, I, I talked to a tenant, uh, a prospect that was interested in the entire ground floor. I would have been great, I don't think the timing was necessarily right for him, or the use, use case for the business. It's a little bit more demisable. Uh, two oh one, or two oh four, two thirty-two Southwest Main, because it is a, um, uh, we are, we are combining several buildings together, um, we can combine suites, but the demise ability is a little bit less. Uh, but we do have several suites that are gonna be, um, various sizes, if you will, for commercial retail businesses. So, again, twenty, twenty units, um, the majority units in both are one bed, one bath. Um, I'd say it's probably two-third, one-third split between one bed and two beds. Um, and, and, um, you know, in both projects, we're gonna be looking at a mix of, you know, food and beverage, um, commercial office, commercial retail, service businesses, you know, mix, um, a mix of, of different types of businesses to support, um, work there. And so, tonight, we're here to sort of educate you a little bit about who we are, um, but also, about a year ago, uh, you know, council and, and the former city manager put together a, a program to incentivize the Ties developers to come to Rocky Mountain, to, you know, to plant their flag, and so we are applying for that grant that the former city manager did put in place. Um, love to partner with the city. Um, it represents roughly six percent of our budget total between the two projects. Um, but we believe that, you know, this is, this is one of those things where we have an opportunity to, to strike the, strike the flint with, uh, with spark and, and see future development. This isn't just a one-time thing, you think this can kick off, you know, successive development, and, uh, you know, it can be a start of many times, so. Finish up on your next steps.
So, we are sort of slightly more ahead on the South Washington project than we are on the Southwest Main from a design point of view. We're almost done with the South Washington design, just for the final stages there. We have, we're talking to both lenders and sort of pulling together the capital partners, and, um, you know, we think the first quarter, you know, is, is gonna be an important finish to that process. The Southwest Main may take a little bit longer, it's okay, it's in the second quarter of twenty twenty-four, but all told, the goal is to begin construction on both projects in the second quarter of twenty twenty-four. Um, you know, we think that we can begin pre-development work on our next project, which right now, we, we lean toward the Tau Town project on two forty-eight Southwest Main. That is one that sort of, we have a friendly group of investors who we think we can work with on that, and I think there, we would begin pre-developing that work towards the end of twenty twenty-four, probably the third quarter, um, hoping to kind of build on the momentum. We find that once you get rolling, you know, it's best to sort of keep those wins at your back and, and sort of having successive projects. The estimated completion of the two projects we're gonna talk to you about today would be second quarter of twenty five, assuming that we can have a, sort of, beginning in, in twenty twenty-four, like we suggested, and so we would hope to have those units sort of up and running, and then starting to really work through the retail stabilization at that point. Um, I will say that retail has historically been a challenge in markets, you know, as we sort of go on in over time. We find that residential comes first, you've seen that at some level in Rocky Mountain already, I know there've been a couple of projects that have come up online. I think that the food and beverage and retail is starting to sort of come back into downtown and we're excited by that. We hope this will give a good boost, both of sort of twenty-four hours sort of traffic for those types of establishments. Kannapolis is a really good analog for us. Talk through Kannapolis was basically a ghost town, um, when the city of Kannapolis bought their downtown back in the two thousand teens. They invested in a street skate improvement, sort of like you've done already. They sort of thought about sort of some initial residential and put in, uh, an incentive package to build some, to new residential, but they were able to lease up their retail downtown, it was something like a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet in downtown Kannapolis during COVID. We've talked to them a lot about how they did it and what was their, their goal, and it was interesting. They focused on the type of retail establishments that are hard to sort of keep rolling in Raleigh. They focused on the boutiques, the clothing stores, the popcorn shops, the restaurants, things like that, that are actually sort of regular sort of browsing type of traffic that we see in, in lots of communities, and historically, we think that we've been part of downtown commerce. And they were able, because the price per square foot on adaptively redeveloped space was so much lower than new construction, they were able to recruit folks who just couldn't afford to sort of open their businesses in Charlotte. And so, they sort of populated the downtown environment, smaller than Rocky Mountain, to be fair, but populated the downtown sort of retail environment in COVID, sort of with this sort of strategy. So, we're hoping to learn lessons from them, see if we can apply, maybe even approve some of the businesses they've started, they, they found, and sort of show that Rocky Mountain can be that downtown walkable sort of retail community. We think, as Benton said, we have the right stock, as well as what's already available, um, to sort of help that grow. So, we, we look forward to working with your downtown team. So we, we look forward to working with the downtown team on that and seeing if we can't sort of get people sort of growing their businesses in downtown Rocky Mount. So with that, I think we're done with an official presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you had about the project, about us. Thank you for your time. We really appreciate it. It's good to be here.
Any questions?
Sure. The Old Belt, the old Tau Town?
Yes, sir.
When would you all include that? Is it part of your project this year or eventually be part of this project?
That is the hope. We've begun sort of doing early-stage pre-development on that building, but we've tried to sort of see what's it, so that we kind of bite off the right amount of this, you know, of this first sort of chunk. And so the first two projects, I think, are, from a design point of view, much, much further along. Candidly, that building is going to be a little bit harder to break up. Being a department store and sort of having those sorts of bones doesn't immediately lay out to residential in quite as easily a way. So we're thinking about what it can be and how that would work, what it would cost. Just a little bit more complicated project, but it is definitely on the radar, and I think that we have people that will move forward on that in twenty four, assuming we get these projects.
Well, one other point on that, it's like, it's not contiguous to the other properties that we have at this moment. So there, there are a couple of buildings that are in between.
Yeah, two buildings in between.
Yeah, two oh four to two thirty-two, then there's a couple, and then the, the Tau Town.
So with the city investor, if what dealt with, um, does that come into play? What, what does that mean for you that have, you know, where we could fly that?
From, just from a financial or a cabinet staff, um, what, what we would love to see is it's sort of the, the first, uh, the first to say yes, but the last money in. So the building's already built. It's the last money to bridge us to, you know, to, to start, start leasing, start operating buildings.
So we're towards it under the project?
Correct.
The commitment is the important part, is that vendors and investors are concerned, but I think where it loses the capital is the likes of.
So they need to see them there supported by you.
Yes, sir.
But there's every city on that.
Yes, sir. We don't jump without them, but they don't give us the parachute without you.
Retail square footage, some of the larger cities, well, I mean, even with new construction, you can make it comparable to, say, our Raleigh or, or Durham. For, for the retail, to, to, for a company that will take retail, you know, such as a restaurant?
Roundabout numbers. We could talk about, you're talking about new construction, so. Much, much higher. Thirty bucks a foot plus for rent, I mean, extremely high.
Did you answer your question, sort of what the, yeah, rents would be?
Well, no, really, the question is, you know, we see some activity downtown. We want to attract some businesses and it's tough to start a business. I mean, that's one of the hardest things, uh, to be an entrepreneur, to start a business. And so obviously, if, you know, it can be attractive for business to come in, you know, is it affordable, I guess, is the question, and then what is that? Well, that's, I don't, I don't know what comparison is between a big city, because you use that analogy, a big city to come to a small city.
And that's one of the reasons why we have some, some funds budgeted in our, in our models for this purpose, to help folks start businesses with up, you know, with up the dollars that come with a negotiated lease.
I can give you two data points on that. I don't know if this answers your question, but at least help, help get that right. So in Canopus, the sort of adaptively reviewed historic building downtown Canopus, they were sort of leasing in the sort of thirteen, seventeen dollars square foot range, which I think a lot of proprietors found, or it was food and beverage, or it was retail sales, they found that as a rate, um, it was, it was worth. In Canopus itself, it was, the new construction was sort of in twenty-seven to thirty dollars a square foot, and in Charlotte, you'd see it in the low thirties. And so it was almost half of what Charlotte was and, you know, maybe a little bit less than half, but still demonstrably different from, from what, uh, what the new construction in, in Canopus was. And that made a big difference. In terms of sort of the availability, you know, I think it's having shell space that can be turned over pretty quickly is important. And we've talked to folks about that, and we have a, a retail bay or two that are kind of ready to go. I think a lot of people have a hard time envisioning what a distressed building is going to look like when it's fixed up. And so we've talked about, about sort of limited sort of shell development, both for commercial office, to the extent that it ever comes back, but also for retail, um, as, as folks go. And that was one of the things that Canopus did do a nice job of. They kept the buildings pretty well, um, workable as, as retail establishments while the city owned them. So they were able to sort of do some basic outfit, you know, three months of outfit, not nine months of outfit. So when somebody came, they could turn that around pretty quickly. So we'd like to talk, um, about that more, and that's definitely something Benton has been thinking through, is how do we sort of pace the retail sort of space development so that we can take on tenants as quick as possible?
First of all, thank you all for your interest and, uh, your potential investment in Rocky Mount, because as you've shown, uh, you've chosen a lot of the places. But thank you for having us, uh, on the map. Uh, also, over the past weekend, we had over twenty-four hundred people in our downtown, uh, event center. And so just to hear about the potential of what this, or these potential projects will do, uh, to help add to what we already have currently existing. Because we're excited and transferable out of downtown. So, uh, in that same vein, hats off to our, uh, event center staff, you know, we've been working tremendously to be there, talking our professionalism. And, um, we're excited about what it provides for those tourists, so that we can be able to benefit from those tourists and not have them eat and, you know, the stays, you know. And not only Raleigh, but just over in Nashville. We want to keep it downtown in the center of our Rocky Mount, and also for our local citizens, having something that could add to our portfolio, things to be able to have as, uh, members here. Thanks you all for, for being here and for the interest.
Yes, uh, thank you. I hope that this will help lead us into more of the downtown motel and parking that. We, we talk about the people coming here downtown. We get to see them stay downtown, and park downtown. And so, and not only that, but our fourteen communities are excited about what's happening downtown. But they're also waiting to see what can happen in those fourteen communities. So while we're designing everything up, I hope we're going to be inclusive for those fourteen communities. I'm really excited about seeing the great housing downtown. But if our fourteen communities do not have livable communities and livable homes, it still kind of leave us kind of outside.
Yes, sir.
Sure. I think, uh, your investment group, uh, came to Albert Treese.
Okay.
And he just gave a presentation about how you acquired the building in a certain part of downtown. And the camp for broadcasting was the building, uh, that's, and it sort of sparked us. And, yeah, we, we, I think that's when, uh, we came back, we've been, we've been, and then we came back and started strategizing a lot of events.
I didn't realize that. That's awesome.
Yes, and so it's good to see you all, you know, full circle, standing back here, um, coming to help us to develop our downtown. And we have always said that we want a vibrant downtown, and that's why we have already funded, uh, we've grants, the fire grant, the EBA, now this, uh, grant here. And so, uh, we just want to give opportunity for those who cannot give the bank loans or for those who cannot, uh, have the credit. For those who have some money and a vision, either want to come downtown and need that, uh, extra help. And so it, it has been working. It's good to see, uh, see you faces at the table to help us continue to build our downtown. So again, I want to thank you all for coming. And your project looks, looks great. I know we don't, the project, we do.
Councilman, I, I mean, I, I used to work in the public sector, I used to work for the state, was involved in a lot of kind of local government financing sort of issues. And one of the things that kind of drew me to the private sector and to working on this was the recognition that there, there's this gap in order. For whatever reason, our secondary cities in North Carolina don't get the love that they should from the learning community, from the investment community. It's not because you don't have people. It's not because there aren't people who want housing in Rocky Mount Nash industry. You know, there's, the demand is there, but for whatever reason, the institutions have been hesitant to sort of embrace that demand. And so what we set out to do with NSB sort of pulling from, in Green Fire in Durham, was to try to create confidence. That's what we say. It's, it's a confidence model that we're trying to show the market, this is a place to invest. This is a place that's going to grow and flourish. And you look at the communities, you have done it well, it catches fire like that, and it's sort of egoic. You've got multiple people coming in and investing money, people living there. It feels slow at this point because you've been working at it for so long. But as soon as it sort of catches fire, you know, three, four, or five years down the road, we have every expectation, Rocky Mount has been one and twenty to which your vision is. We say all the time, we can't create visions for local governments. We can amplify the vision that you've been working hard over the last ten, twenty years to sort of put forward. That's our job. So we want to amplify where you want to go, what is the future and legacy of Rocky Mount. And we want to help tell that story to the market from places that we're working across North Carolina and the region to get people to come, live, work, play, and invest.
I just want to thank you for the, um, strategy of having blended incomes in the same process, because I think that's so much more sustainable. And, um, while we were excited several years ago in Durham, Durham is now working itself in a corner because they've not, uh, made places and spaces in downtown for people with, um, mobility costs. And if we fulfill the market to investment and not the market to people, then we find ourselves challenged, um, creating a sustainable, long-term growth and return on investment. And so I appreciate how you have incorporated that upfront. I understand you got to make money, you know, and, um, and everybody doesn't have to live in the same place in the same way. But everyone should have the opportunity. Downtown, everybody's in the town. It's not some people.
That's how it's going to thrive.
That's exactly right. To be here to make it work. So I appreciate your vision, and, um, that you brought it to us, and we didn't have to come to you saying you're required to do this or required to do that. So I appreciate that.
Trying to bring this back together, back to the beginning, I guess, so just thank you for coming. We've got to put down a, we've got to pitch a couple of buildings before meeting, but just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Say, Andrew, if you could, um, the grants that we, that we're talking about here, we've got that paperwork for that. If you could distribute that to the council and the mayor, I appreciate it, so we can remind ourselves of all the details of that. And, um, while I'm thinking about it, the mention of the, uh, difficulty with Old Belt's building. I know in Nashville, they have a, uh, old coffee store that's now a hotel, which, um, we, you know, we had to move with that. I don't know if that would work here, but.
It works in Nashville.
It works in Nashville.
Absolutely. You don't worry to explore it. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, um, any other questions? Just to be in the whole.
Yeah, we got to get down.
All right, now, how you doing? All right, all right, all right. Good stuff. Good stuff.
Hope you enjoy.
Hey, how you doing? Good to see you. All right.
What's up, man?
All right, all right. What's going on, man?